Being recorded.
I will take that as yes. Councilmember Korman, as you announced last week, could be here, so I will be chairing today's meeting. Good evening, everyone. Call to order the committee of the whole. We have just one item on our agenda tonight, but I hopeful we'll have after a couple of presentations, a good discussion and your questions today around after a presentation from WashDOT and Sound Transit, all about the I-405 BRT corridor updates. So with that, I will invite Lisa and Craig from WashDOT to start the presentation.
Hi. Good evening. I just want to thank you for the opportunity to present to council tonight. My name is Lisa Hodson, and I am the program administrator for the 405-167 corridor program. And my deputies with me tonight, Rob Wick, he'll wave his hand so you can see who he is as well, as he starts to engage a little bit more with you all in the future. I want to take tonight an opportunity to update the council on where we're at with the Renton to Bellevue widening express toll lanes project, as well as provide an overarching program update. We're going to highlight some challenges encountered during the pandemic, also what came from ledge session, as well as our current delivery schedule, and some budget proviso language that came along with that, too. We're going to start with the Renton to Bellevue project. This is a design-build contract, and it was awarded in August of 2019 to Flatiron Lane Joint Venture. And before we awarded this project, we did some, based on the history of the projects that we've had in the area and feedback, we set some project goals, as shown on the slide. And those are listed in the Order of Precedence with our number-one project goal of reducing impacts to our local community and the traveling public during construction.
Lisa, I'm not sure if it's just me, but I'm seeing it kind of in presentation mode, and I'm seeing part of a slide. It doesn't look like it's the full image. I don't know if it's showing that way for others.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm going to let Craig work his magic. Oh, wait, just one second. Thank you for letting us know.
No worries.
Mr. Chair, I don't know if you have it on your screen as well, "Meeting is being recorded" signage right in the middle of the slides.
There. There you go. Is that better? Okay.
Much better.
All right. So want to talk a little bit about the full rebuild of the Northeast 44th Street interchange. And this really represents the most complicated and longest construction sequence for the project. Next slide, please. This slide is a visualization of our original Northeast 44th Street conceptual design. This concept reconfigured the interchange with bus rapid transit stops in the middle of the freeway, and they would connect on the new direct access ramp tying into the existing Northeast 44th Street that passes over 405. Moving to the next slide, there'll be a video that comes with this as I talk. During the design of the project, the design builder started to look at the interchange and came up with an updated design that essentially reverses the elevation of Northeast 44th Street and 405. In this design, then, 405 will go over the local road at Northeast 44th Street. In early 2020, our agency, along with the design builder, we worked with the city staff and did some significant community outreach to get feedback on this concept. The outreach work included meeting with neighborhood leaders. We hosted an online open house and conducted a survey so we could educate and also address any concerns. Some things with this new design is that it significantly reduces the impacts to the traveling public and the surrounding community. A large portion of this interchange can be built offline, which allows more flexibility for that construction schedule. And then that brings work that would have predominantly been built at night into the daytime construction hours and helps to reduce freeway closures. In addition to reversing those elevations, that really helped with the ped bike experience. So we were able to tie in with a more natural grade on the west side of the freeway. In addition, the design builder will also be providing wider bridges on northbound and southbound 405, and that will be able to accommodate the master plan in this area for both directions. So we've got some extra bridge width out of this as well. If we go to the next slide. They're currently working out there at Northeast 44th Street, and they're really focused on the realignment of Lake Washington Boulevard Northeast. So the work this summer will include grading and alignment of Lake Washington Boulevard. And hopes are, we're in that effort to relocate the northbound 405 ramp, which you can see in that orange circle. They're going to be working on some retaining walls and some ground improvement and work around the May Creek Bridge as well. And then you can see that once the north ramp, northbound on-ramp is relocated, and we're able to also get the northbound off-ramp where it needs to go, we'll be able to free up that space that is the current loop ramp that you see on the screen. And that's how we can do work offline, because they'll start constructing that new northbound mainline structure in an area that is no longer occupied by the traveling public. Let's go to the next slide. Also, we have work at Cedar Avenue and Renton Avenue Bridges, so I wanted to talk a little bit about that. Next slide. So I know everyone's aware, at Renton Hill, both Cedar Avenue Bridge and the Renton Avenue Bridges provide access to that community. In WashDOT's conceptual design, we had anticipated needed to modify both Renton and Cedar Avenue Bridges. That would be needed to accommodate keeping the existing auxiliary lane between SR-169 and Talbot Road South. This is one of our lessons learned in the Bellevue to Linwood project. We had repurposed some of those auxiliary lanes, and we didn't get a lot of good feedback from the public, so we worked really hard to be able to keep that auxiliary lane in that southbound direction. The design builder's design will eliminate the need to extend the Cedar Avenue Bridge, and that equated to about 300 days of closure at this access point to the Renton Hill. We weren't able to keep the Renton Avenue Bridge that will still need to be extended so we can accommodate the additional width for the expansion of Mainline 405. And then, understanding that both of these bridges where modifications would not be master plan compatible, and so they would be need to be replaced in the future, WashDOT is working with the design builder and in the city, too, to update the Cedar Avenue Bridge aesthetics to match. And I got some pictures to show you. Next slide. This slide shows the freeway view of the existing bridge and the rendering of the updated treatments. That will include painting the existing girders and adding that decorative rail on top, and that would match what's currently on Benson Avenue and what we have at the Direct Connector. And then, on the next slide from the street view, this also again shows rendering of the updated treatment and includes the decorative rail and also painting the barrier as well. So as we move into schedule, next slide. Much of the fieldwork to date has been at focus on the East Trail, King County East Trail, and we were really excited to be able to open about one and a half miles of that trail just before the Memorial Day weekend. The work on that trail will continue. We anticipate the full length of that trail later this summer. And then there has been a significant amount of work at 44th Street interchange. As noted, that is a long-schedule item, and it's a full rebuild of the interchange. That will continue through the life of the project. And then, the Renton Hill Bridge that needs to be modified, that currently is scheduled to begin in late 2022. And then I was going to transition just to our corridor update and just update you on the most recent legislative session and how that current law budget is different from where we were, in particular to 2019. So on the left side of the screen, this was what was passed in 2019 with Bill 5825. That bill officially combined 405 and 167 into one corridor count. And it also appropriated $938 million to $1.16 billion in projects to be funded through bonded toll revenue. It had five projects that were associated with allocation of funds, and those are identified on the left side. I wanted to draw a note, because I know North 8th Street direct access is important to the city of Renton and to the system as a whole. That project was funded, and you can see the $20 million in there, and then some legislative intent to provide construction funding. Our agency assumed the difference, or the delta between the $938 and the $1.16 billion was the construction of North 8th, and was also in the LEAP list or the current law budget for 2019. As we look to the right side of the screen, this represents the current law budget, and you can see that the same project lists are noted. And again, on Item 5, North 8th direct access, it's still showing $20 million for design and $230 for the design construction piece. The one thing that was added is Item 6. So at Northeast 85th Street in Kirkland, that's the Sound Transit project, our agency asked for an additional $10 million in toll revenue, and that's there to address toll rate signs and equipment necessary to access the express toll lanes. So delta of $10 million difference from 2019 to 2021. If we could go to the next slide. So some things have changed since 2019. I know everybody is aware the pandemic has caused some challenges, and mostly for us, it's a revenue shortfall that we saw through those express toll lanes. It's not just the revenue that's been lost, but it's also looking at what the impacts of that revenue will be into the future as well. The effects of the schedules, I can illustrate in the next slide. And I just wanted to note that when we look at the corridor, we look at it as one system and the needs throughout that corridor. And I think the easiest way to say this is the money that was allocated in 2019, there just simply isn't that same amount of money to complete the projects that were appropriated. Looking at this slide, it gives you an idea of what we are looking at. The lime-green line is the forecasted revenue from November of 2019. So in general, before pre-COVID, there was about $3 million of revenue being generated from the toll lanes. When you look at the green bars underneath, those are actuals. And so over this past year, we've averaged about $1 million a month, so a difference between those two. The one thing I do want to note is that space between the lime-green line and the green blocks below, that represents about $33 million worth of revenue that was not generated, and that was backfilled by the American Rescue Plan Act. So some funding did come through this legislative session to backfill that lost revenue. It just doesn't talk about what's lost in the future, and so that's really been our challenge. I think, you know, at least on a positive note, in the last three months, we've seen an uptick in traffic, and we've also seen an uptick in the revenue generated from those lanes. And the other thing that we've done as COVID hit is we went from a yearly forecasting to quarterly forecasting. So we're looking forward to seeing that June forecast come out, which will have performance through May. And then, next slide. So from a schedule perspective, when we look at the current law budget, item or letter D is the 522 to 527 project. And those dash lines on this diagram show the changes that have occurred since 2019. And so that project on the north end has moved out to the 2325 biennium due to those revenue impacts. There's also some budget proviso language that I'll get to in just a moment related to that project. The other changes, I noted the influx of money for the 85th Street project, that's Item C, and I will leave that to Sound Transit to talk about where they're at in their process following my presentation. We've talked about North 8th, but what happened at North 8th is that preliminary engineering moved out a biennium, so you can see the dash line there with letter F. And then you can see where the construction lies over the following two bienniums, starting in 2025. And just wanted to note, too, letter H, that was our 167 master plan, and the legislature did reappropriate funding for the 2123 biennium for that process. And our next slide will talk about the budget provisos. So this first proviso is directing that WashDOT look at the 522 to 527 project. It allows the advancement and the construction of that project earlier than is shown in the current law budget schedule if funds are identified before September 1st. We are also directed to work with the State Treasurer's Office to pursue some alternatives to toll revenue funding and also explore phasing and modifying that project with a report due in September, middle of September. And as we look at that proviso, the next slide, thank you. The Office of the State Treasurer has not yet completed an updated financial analysis on our current law budget. However, a preliminary analysis was conducted from December information, so when the governor's proposed budget came out, and that was pre-ledge session. It included all the projects that were listed in 5825, and you can see on the screen, the funding gap is pretty sizable at $360 to $400 million. But we are looking at funding options. A lot of them are listed on the screen. This has come from some initial brainstorming that occurred and feedback from our stakeholders, and really looking at some opportunity to leverage other loan mechanisms, such as a TFI or GARV, looking at the potential for new revenue at state and federal levels, and also other considerations that we've used on other projects, maybe not the traditional means, but an opportunity maybe to defer sales tax. Also, we're working with the Transportation Commission as they set rates. And then also, what's the bonding climate look like as the treasurer runs his analysis? And then...
As I see, Councilmember Perez has her hand raised, it might be a question on that last slide.
Okay.
If I might pause you just for a second.
Oh, sure.
Oh, it's okay. I didn't mean to interrupt you. I know that you're almost finished presenting your presentation.
Trying to keep it my 15 minutes. Happy to answer a question, though. How may I help you?
I was waiting for the end, but I decided to raise my hand, just in case. Thank you. Great presentation. I know that you're almost finished, but I needed to make sure that I am understanding correctly what you're saying. So in your slide, when you were talking about the, which is page 17 from your presentation, when you are talking about the current schedule, now that you guys have to rethink how you do this, I see that, again, there are a couple of projects in Renton that they are not going to be delivered in time, but now they are going to be until 2028. Am I correct on this?
So the one in relationship to Renton Direct is, I believe, letter F is what you're talking about, so the North 8th Street direct access. It did push the beginning of the preliminary engineering, yes, out a biennium. So that, instead of starting in 2023, it starts in 2025, followed by construction behind it, anticipating that to be a construction over two biennium.
Again, I very much appreciate the presentation that you're providing us. This is very good information, but I'm a little bit disappointed, and I wish you could educate me what we can do for this project not to be delayed, because it's a very important project that we have been loving. The legislation very hard for the last two years to be able to allocate the money to do this and expressing why it's so important for that area. And at this point, I feel a little bit, you know, that, again, Renton is left behind in these projects. The South King County is very important, and 405 is the only corridor that we actually have for our community to move, you know, from north to east to south. So any kind of recommendations that you can provide us for this project not to be delayed until 2028? I see, because I always see 2028, and I always add two more years, you know, but for me, it's 2030. And that seems like nine years is a long time for this to come through, especially in a specific area that we are looking forward to bring a lot of business and revenue to the city.
Sure. I can understand. We, my own office, was looking forward to delivering these and have a lot of great staff, and we're going to have a little gap in our staffing as well to get to where we need to go. I think the hard part of this is that, as we're talking to the treasurer, in 2019, you know, we had the upper and lower boundary limits, so 938 to 1.16. At that point, the treasurer was really more comfortable in the 938 realm, and so we probably in 2019 had a deficit to overcome to get this done. And then, as we look at 2021 and the COVID, it's hard, because we simply can't get the money that's needed or required to get to bonding as anticipated. I think we're probably, what I've heard the treasurer say, we're about 65% or about $660 million is where he thinks we can be for bonding what we know today. So how do we get there? So we've looked at some ideas on that. If you go back to the funding, the different funding pieces, looking at that 360 to 400 million, the treasurer's already come back and said that he's more comfortable going from a three to one coverage razor to a two and a half, so that's really helpful. That's lowered that number to about 360. And I think where we're at is looking for options of, I call them buckets of funds. It's really hard to overcome 360 in one full swoop, but we do know that there's been some grants out there. They typically range in like the 20, 25 million. The 33 million from the American, the ARPA funds, that's a direct subtraction from that 360, so that already takes it down to 330. And so it's looking for those opportunities to fund these. And I think, in one respect, too, for North 8th, although we didn't get any new funding packages, I did note that both the House and the Senate listed North 8th for a funding opportunity. So any opportunity to find pockets of funds that can be allocated towards this effort helps to bring things back to where we were hoping they'd be. And so it kind of leads into where we're at today and the work we've done with our executive advisory group. We really are going to need help to get where we're going, and we're going to need to be very interactive with not just the executive advisory group, but our inter-agency working group as we look through this proviso options and making sure that we're meeting everything that we possibly can. And we're hoping to leverage that lower inter-agency working group to get feedback. We're hoping to do this like maybe every two weeks as we progress to our next executive advisory group meeting, and hoping that they can take the information that we work on and get that streamlined back through the city and up through the EAG members and can continue this dialogue, because it's going to take all of us to be part of this process to get to the end.
Thank you. I very much appreciate your answer and the work that you've done. And just, I don't think I have to just mention that, as you know, the city of Renton, the only project that we, well, not the only, but the only transportation method that we are going to receive from the Sound Transit 3, it's going to be the BRT. So that station that is going to be put in that ramp, it's very important for the BRT to work effectively for this region. And unfortunately, this is going to impact directly. We don't get a light rail, we have limited services to Sound Transit, and that ramp will help us to make a big vital stop in an area that is very active for business community. But Lisa, I know that you understand that, and I don't want to take your time. I'm just trying to advocate for our residents and remind everybody how important it is to bring transportation to South King County and specifically cities like Renton, where equity is very important these days, and we need to be on the table all the time advocating for what is needed for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. I totally understand. Thank you.
Thank you, and apologies. If I had known you meant to wait till the end, I would have let us get there. So I know we got a couple more slides, and we can kick right back in.
I covered them in my answer, so I just...
Fantastic.
Can get to the last one where it shows us where we're headed. But just, it's going to be a concerted effort. And I guess, maybe just to leave you with something, you know, our agency is very committed to work with you all. We're working with the State Treasurer's Office already and the commission, and we've been working with them all along, and we're really looking for those creative ways that we can look for possible solutions. We're looking to develop alternatives and really communicate where we need help and feedback from folks as we move through this process. And I think the other last piece that we have here is, instead of doing quarterly executive advisory groups, we're targeting another one in August, so we can keep people informed before we have to submit something in September to back to the ledge.
Thank you very much for the presentation, and I appreciate the conversation. We jump-started. I'm sure we have enough time for a couple of questions before. We want to make sure we leave Paul and Sound Transit some time as well, too. We don't want to take all of that away. So do we have any additional questions? I know the, I can just say before we launch that I agree with the sentiments expressed by Councilmember Perez on the timing and doing everything we can to make it a priority. That's going to be really, really important. Part of, you know, me voting for Sound Transit was believing that this stuff was going to come through for us, so the equity piece is big for me. Other questions from folks? Councilmember Halloran.
Yes, thank you. I also noticed in that same graph where Item F was pushed out two years, that Item A is also, looks like it's pushed out two years. Could you help us understand that?
Ah, yes. I have to see my, Craig, tell me what Item F-A is again on my graphic. Is that Renton to Bellevue?
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah. So Renton to Bellevue is really an overarching funding piece, so it had multiple contracts. One of the contracts was Direct Connector, which is already built. And then we're currently working on the Renton to Bellevue bigger piece. And then there is a follow-on contract that had toll revenue assigned to it in the Connecting Washington package, and so that is also remains and part of the bonded toll revenue package as a total, so we can complete some interchange improvements, additional auxiliary lanes. It was really about looking at when the system comes online, where did traffic move that maybe didn't match the model, and what do we need to address? So that got pushed out, not so much in time, but it's not, because there's no dash lines with letter A, but that's what that third piece is that's sitting out there. Does that help or did not? Is there a follow-on question from that?
Well, maybe this will be covered in the next thing, but the yellow box there that says BRT is contingent on the realignment process.
Right.
And what we're looking at here is the realignment process, correct?
No. This is the mainline work that WashDOT does. It is highly needed for bus rapid transit. We provide that infrastructure where the bus rapid transit lanes will run in our express toll lane system. And that's just a recognition that we're a partnership with our transportation partner, and Paul will talk to that just in a little bit.
Thanks for clarifying.
Yeah.
Councilmember Prince.
Yes, to answer Councilmember O'Halloran's question, the realignment process is the process that Sound Transit's going through right now because of the budget gap due to COVID. And my assumption is that Paul will cover some parts of that in his presentation.
Great, thanks.
And if we are ready, we can jump to Paul, unless we have one final question, maybe, before we shift over to Sound Transit. I want to make sure, you know, it kind of went off, but we want to leave out a good time for Sound Transit, and actually, it looks like maybe we have Ariel here to present. So...
Sure.
No additional questions, let's jump right into it.
Sure. Hello, everybody. My name's Ariel Taylor. I do government relations for Sound Transit, specifically on the BRT corridor. And tonight, I actually have, if I can get my screen to start sharing here, I have Matt Sheldon and Paul Cornish here to give you not only a realignment update, but also a brief update on our work for the 405 BRT program. Let's see here. Finally got the screen to open. Can I get a clarification that everybody can see my screen? Great. Excellent. So I'm going to go ahead and just give us a quick little overview, introduce Matt and Paul, and then I'll let them go ahead and take the show. I will also highlight that if we want to focus more on realignment, because I know we've got a short amount of time here tonight, Paul has graciously offered to let you guys have his time. So if you want to focus more on questions about realignment, we can definitely do that and save the BRT update. That is only a couple of slides until the very end. So... That is only a couple of slides until the very end. So tonight, we're going to cover, just, you know, just like board member and council member Prince suggested, what is realignment? What does that mean for our agency? Sort of discuss the issues of revenue and increasing project costs, outline what the realignment process is and the plans to readjust the schedules. And then, like I said, Paul is going to follow up with a little BRT update, kind of building off of what Lisa just presented. So with that, I'll go ahead and introduce Matt Sheldon, who is our Deputy Executive Director of Planning and Integration here at Sound Transit. Go ahead and take it away, Matt.
All right. Well, good evening, and thank you for having me tonight. Next slide, please, Ariel. So you'll have to stop me if you need more background on realignment. We've been at this for a while, and I, it's hard to keep straight. Who knows what? So I'm going to hit this at a pretty high clip and just try to focus on kind of where we're at at this point. But a little bit of background is realignment is the process that the Sound Transit Board needs to go through when we enter a state where our long-range plan is not affordable. And that began to become apparent as the pandemic hit last spring, spring a year ago, really driven initially by changes in our long-term revenue forecasts with the economy tanking. It looked like we were going to start seeing a pretty big revenue gap. Later in the year, that was compounded as additional information came to light around some of our projects on the cost side. We had many projects sort of in-flight, if you will, during project development, and many of them reached the stage where we had more design done and were able to understand better what the cost implications were. And unfortunately, we started to see increases there. So those two things have conspired to create what we call an affordability gap for the overall long-term program, which is a reminder, you know, is multi billions of dollars and stretches out over 25 years. So there are some options in realignment to deal with this situation, and they include cutting costs, raising additional revenues, or delaying or phasing projects. And I guess I would note, this is not the first time Sound Transit has been through this kind of a process. We needed to do a realignment in the wake of the Great Recession about a dozen years ago and put some of these tools to use at that time as well. Next slide, please. So the magnitude of the financial challenge that we're seeing at the moment is about $7.9 billion in affordability gap between now and the end of the program at the 2040s. And as I mentioned, that's made up of revenue and costs. Right now, the revenue, long-range projections about is down about $1.5 billion. But we are seeing higher costs across all of our projects that total up to about $6.4 billion. Next slide. So I'm going to talk for a moment about scenarios, and this is a term that you may have heard in the boardroom over the last couple of months. Around the beginning of the year, excuse me, the board started to really zero in on realignment and what they wanted to do about it. And we've done a lot of this work in the form of bringing them scenarios, a different mix and match of projects and timing to try to get the plan to an affordable state. So there've been, there's been a lot of work that has happened. They really started this process last summer by adopting some criteria that they wanted to use to measure their choices around realignment. We brought to them over the winter a bunch of information about how each of the projects in the program performed against those criteria. But really, since about the February and March timeframe, they've been talking about different ways to put these together to get to an affordable plan. And I'm going to focus today on just those that are most recent as of really starting in May. Next slide, please. So I'm going to talk about three, and there are variations on a theme, if you will. This is the, really kind of the starting point of the current set of realignment scenarios that the board has been discussing. This was first presented in the boardroom back in early May. And what what we've done here is tried to take all of the projects that are subject to realignment and place them in what we're calling tiers, which really is a prioritization framework. So what you see on this table is down the left side, the corridor we're talking about, we have some projects that are system-wide in nature, and across the top, you see the tiers and what the level of delay that's implied by being in a tier might be. This particular one really started, it was a result of looking at individual criteria over time, then different combinations of criteria. But this is really kind of the starting point of how do you balance all of that across the system as you move forward? And it really takes a look at both timing of projects, but also takes into account the financing plan for for the system, also discusses or balances operability of the system as you build different pieces of it. Partner readiness, so a great example of this is the 405 BRT program, as you just heard, is in part dependent on WashDOT's ability to move their program forward, places where we can integrate with our transit partners, but then also beginning to reflect what we've heard from the board in terms of the priorities of if they have to make choices about when things happen, what are the things that are most important to advance quickly as opposed to others that that might wait a little longer? So this particular one was kind of the starting point of that. And what I would point out here is that it generally prioritizes the high-capacity transit extensions that are part of the ST3 program, that's the light rail extensions and bus rapid transit, over some of the lower-performing projects in in the program. And we can get into how projects perform or not against those criteria if you'd like, but suffice it to say, this is kind of the the first attempt to sort of balance all of those things. The other thing you'll notice here is that particularly in the central corridor, the West Seattle Ballard Light Rail Extension project is so big that as things happen with that project, it really affects the entire system. And what you're going to see as I go through these scenarios is different ways to sort of slice and dice that project in a way that allows us to deliver the whole program as quickly as possible. Next slide, please. So this is an example of what it means to be in a tier. And the the part I want you to focus on is that right-hand column. By being in Tier One, for instance, that means that essentially we would continue moving ahead on the project apace and move toward construction on projects in that tier with minimal delay, two years or less. Being in Tier Two with a little bit more delay implies that we're probably not going to go all the way to construction, but we're going to keep moving on environmental review, getting the design done, making right-of-way purchases to be ready to move to construction. Tier Three moves environmental and and begins the right-of-way process, completes some preliminary design, but we might have to slow down a bit on those projects. And then Tier Four would be things that the board is essentially would be saying, we're going to hold off on those for a little while until we see how things develop. Next slide, please. So this is another scenario. This is, again, I mentioned, these are all variations on a theme. This particular one changes things up a little bit in terms of the order of the bus rapid transit program. You'll notice that the 405 Stride South program is prioritized along with SR522 BRT, but we've put a little bit more delay on the 405 North piece largely because, you know, WashDOT's funding has been delayed to complete the electronic toll lanes in that section, although that could change, right? They might be able to begin to move those up. This also takes a little bit different approach to how we build out the West Seattle Ballard project. So we wouldn't build the whole thing at once. We would build it in pieces, starting just short of the full West Seattle extension in Del Ridge and only go as far as Denny through downtown, but then build the other pieces later. Next slide, please. Next slide, Ariel? There we go. So this is a third variation of that. This is similar to what you just saw, but again, changes the timing of the BRT program a little bit. This particular scenario would move ahead on 405 Stride and 522 Stride a little more quickly, including the north portion of it. And again, changes the way we would approach the West Seattle Ballard project. So I'm skipping over a lot of details here, but this is just to give you a flavor of the kinds of things that we're balancing and the sort of trade-offs that we're testing for the board. Another notable piece about this one is some of the infill stations on the light rail program are actually advanced to become a little bit, happen a little bit sooner than some of the other scenarios. So next slide, please. And let's move on to the next one. There we go. So I'm just a couple more slides here, and then I'll I'll stop and see what kind of questions you have. But this is really just to illustrate, we've been at this for a while. I told, I mentioned that we started this as the pandemic began last year. One of the actions the board took last year was to go ahead and approve a six-year transportation improvement program, which is essentially the agency's work program on the capital side that put a uniform five-year delay on every project in the program and kind of as a placeholder pending a realignment decision. And they needed to do that to be able to demonstrate we had an affordable plan. Since that time, we've been working with the board, and they've been talking about these scenarios in an attempt to get to a set of decisions here in around the July timeframe that would realign the program, but also set a flexible framework that would allow continued review and change to the program as conditions change. One of the things we saw during this process was a change in the revenue forecast. And last year, we were looking at about a $6 billion revenue decrease over the long term. But as we updated our financial plans this spring, we began to see, well, the revenues are actually looking a little bit better. We're still in the hole a little bit, but not as bad as we were. So those are the kinds of changes that the board wants to be watching and be nimble in terms of how they manage the program. But we are headed towards some decisions here in July. Next slide. And those decisions really have yet to be totally framed up. The board is still talking about various scenarios and approaches. I would say that they have not settled yet on exactly what they want to do. One of the things I sort of skipped over quickly, and we could spend a couple of minutes talking about if you want, is right now, a lot of the focus of realignment has been on changing schedules on projects. There is also a companion piece of work that is underway to review the costs for all of the projects and look for opportunities for savings. And the board has hired an independent cost review consultant to help with that. That's going to be an ongoing piece of work that we could lay that out for you a little bit more if you'd like. But both of those things are at play in terms of what the board will consider here in July. So let me stop there. Excuse me. Let's see what kinds of questions you might have, and we can move on to cost if you'd like to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. I see Councilmember Perez has her hand raised, and it seems like the appropriate spot to pause for a question. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Matt. Thank you very much for your presentation. As you know, I'm very passionate about transportation, and and I always hope that you guys will come to this table with great news and positive news and telling you, guess what? We are ahead of schedule, and we're going to deliver that BRT before we thought. But anyway, it is one slide that is really concerning to me right now, which is in page eight, which, which you are in the, in the tier four, you have ST3 parking, 10 years plus pause work. Renton got three things out of ST3. One is the BRT, the second is the parking garage at Grady Way, and the third was a study for a light rail. The parking on the Grady Way is very important and very vital for the use of the BRT because we are not like Seattle that we can catch a bus every other corner to get to the BRT or any other transportation. We unfortunately have to drive to park our car in a parking garage to be able to catch a bus transportation, any kind of transportation. So having a delay on the parking lot for more than 10 years or have a pause work, this is very concerning, very, very concerning. So while I understand the budget concerns, I also know that the light rail is very, very expensive. So I see some, some of the priorities are given to the light rail and other areas that are not part of of South King County, as well as Pierce County, I see that's part of the priorities. How are you guys prioritizing where where the budgets are going to be completed and where which budgets, which which projects are going to be paused? Thank you.
So fundamentally, the board is prioritizing. They're the ones who will tell us in what order they want to rejigger the program in order to be able to deliver as much as possible, as fast as possible, within an affordable framework. One thing I would note on parking, and I kind of skipped over that because we're a little short on time, but one of the concepts the board has been talking about is detaching the parking investments from the HCT or High Capacity Transit Extensions in total and phasing those later in the program. Because when you add all of those up across the entire program, we're north of $600 million in cost. And that's a piece that if it were delayed, could help the overall affordability of the program. But I should note that, you know, the board has not endorsed that approach at this point. They're still talking about different ways to find capacity in the program and balance how quickly we can move on all pieces. So they have by no means made the decision to delay parking at South Renton or anywhere else in the program at this point. And, you know, that's something I know the board is very anxious to hear from communities about, about what would that mean? We're very anxious that if it were delayed, obviously, and we're still opening the BRT service, that we want to make sure we've got good answers for how to get people to and from the system. And I would say, you know, the board is not unified, in their opinion, about whether to delay parking. So long way of saying, no decisions have been made yet, and there is still plenty of room to have input with the board about whether that's something they should pursue or not.
Thanks, Matt.
Thanks. And we are, of course, yeah, very fortunate to have Councilmember Prince serving on the board, so I know he will represent us well there. I certainly would share the concerns on parking costs being delayed, that it would never get built potentially someday. So that's something I would certainly worry about if that is a priority within for that station. But I do understand the need to prioritize along there. So I, I, obviously, I'm going to advocate for Renton while I'm here, so. That, should we, if there's any other questions on realignment, or we got time to maybe sneak through the last couple of slides before final questions? Councilmember Halloran.
Oh, yeah, let's finish the slides first. Thanks.
Please proceed. Okay, these will be my slides. I will keep this quick because I know you have a hard stop. So next slide, please, Ariel. So the 405 BRT itself is a 37-mile-long corridor from Linwood to Bellevue and Bellevue to Burin. It's going to run as two, two separate independent lines, which actually is working very well for the BRT as we look at the realignment process and how we're partnered with WashDOT. So so it'll actually could be a nice benefit to be in the separate lines, it's always intended to be. We do have 11 stations. We have three, three expanded, newer expanded parking facilities, both, two of those three are in, are in Renton. So that's, I understand that the questions, concerns you have about the parking. We're very excited about the BRT. It connects, the 405 connects to three light rail stations. It also connects to the 522 BRT, which connects to another light rail station. So I really like, I like this map because it shows how the BRT really ties together a big series of high-capacity transit investments and really helps complete this side, the north end of the lake. Expected ridership in 18,000, 26,000 per day in, in 2042, that is a rising year for all of the ST, at the time, for all of the ST3 projects to be completed. And again, we have the two lines, Burin to Bellevue, S1, and Bellevue to Linwood is S2. And in case you're wondering, the 522 line is called S3. So so we nailed down those those names. Next slide, please. So here's a close-up of S1, which is the BRT from the Grand Transit Center to Bellevue. And we've been working diligently as a team with our project partners, people like Jim Seitz and Doug, about, you know, how do we come up with the most effective and efficient improvements we can? We've made some scope reductions at the Grand Transit Center, some of the roadway access on 154th. We have a really cool solution for the Tuck Willa Station. We're actually going to do an inline stop in the middle of the freeway, and that is something that we're looking to have Lisa's group, group deliver for us. That is much more effective than getting off the road and going through the city streets to get to the Tuck Willa Station. We actually did some review of some bus lanes on 518 and decided that they're really expensive and won't going to save us a lot of times. We had taken those out. And then, as Lisa mentioned, the flip concept on 44th, which on transit, we're very excited about because it actually makes the the walk between parking and the BRT station, it makes it a little flatter, makes it a little less grade. So we, so we view that as an improvement. So so we're going on pretty well. Environmental work is done. we do that as an improvement. So we're going on pretty well. Environmental work is done. That is behind us. And so that's great. We have our consultants right now working towards a 30% design. Ideally, we would have been at about 30% this time of year, but there was a pause last year as the Sound Transit Board is kind of stepped back to recalibrate where we're going to go with this next. And so our consultant stopped getting those proceeds in the spring. They got it in the fall, but they are hard at work, at work moving forward to bring that 30% to volition. And the next slide, please. Again, here's a picture that shows, it's not as fancy as Lisa's pictures on 44th. But we like to put this, mention this whenever we can, because the cost savings that Sound Transit had realized with this intersectional work by doing it as part of the WashDOT Renton to Bellevue project is great. And we really like to emphasize the partnership that we have with WashDOT because that is a common theme on the 405 BRT. And as I was just saying, it's under construction, which we're excited to have, at least first portion of the BRT that's actually under construction. And so the next slide, please. A big piece of the BRT in Renton is the South Renton Transit Center. This will be at the intersection of Rainier and Grady. We already own the property. We did an early acquisition with board's approval a couple of years ago because this was for sale, which is great. Because if you look at a lot of the strains right now, it's right of way, right of way, as Puget Sound is getting pretty expensive. So it's great that we have this thing nailed down. We actually own this site. We have possession of this site. The current plan would be to put 700 parking stalls there, as well as the BRT stops, plus a bunch of the metro stops. So we're going to have a very nice integrated system here. And we're also looking at putting some transit-oriented development in the southwest corner. We know that corner is very important to the city. That's the city, it's a gateway to the city. You have some really cool art there right now. So we're trying to put all that stuff in the blue, in the blue site that is on your screen. To the right, in the green site, that's the WashDOT park, existing park, right? So we got a lot of transit, a lot of transit goodness that's going to go on down there. So we are working towards 30% on that. We recently went through a little tweaking process of how the buses would be turning around through the site. Jim, I believe, is part of that and other Renton staff to help us, help us figure out our best effort there. So thank you very much for that. And then our next slide. This is a really quick slide that shows the bars on the top are BRT North, S2. On the south is S1. And the gray bar is what existing Regional Express bus would take to run that, that distance, Linwood to Bellevue or Buren to Bellevue. As you can see, in the north, we go from 57 minutes all the way down to 33 minutes. When WashDOT comes along with their express toll lane project, we can get our BRT stations in the middle of the freeway, really makes that north end sing. And then on the south end, Buren to Bellevue, we go from 55 minutes to 38, 34 minutes, which is, which is quite the improvement. And the key to that improvement is actually putting the freeway station at Tuck Willa International Boulevard in the, in the middle of the freeway. Because this means we don't have to get off the freeway, go through the street. So that's a great time savings. And the way we're delivering this is with WashDOT. So that, again, is just a nice, here's how we're working together to get these, to get these speeds down, to increase the speed reliability of the BRT service. Next slide, please.
Paul, I might have to cut you short a little bit because we're going to make a break a little bit before. Do you mind if we just jump into questions? I know we just had the last couple of slides here.
Yeah, let's jump right in. It sounds great.
Of course, I say that. I saw Councilmember O'Halloran had her hand raised, so I was, I was assuming there was a question coming in there.
Yeah, I guess I'll go ahead and ask my question about the TRD area. We have heard that Amazon is going to provide $100 million to build affordable housing near Sound Transit stations. Given what you know about transit-oriented development work underway near the South Renton Transit Center, will you be working to utilize some of Amazon's proposed funding for housing near the Grady and Rainier Transit facility?
That's a great question. I'm not, I'm not sure of the answer. I know, you know, I heard about that recently as well. But I know our TRD folks are very active in the community and working with all the project partners that we can find. That's the exact sort of stuff that our TRD program digs into and tries to, tries to make happen. I don't know if it's specific to the site, but, but we can find out as the TRD moves forward and what their, what their funding, what their, what the scenarios are going to be, what their options are going to be for that.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm not sure if we have time for more questions. I don't see any more hands raised. I do want to say thank you to everyone for presenting today. Really appreciated it. I wish we had more time. So perhaps we'll do this again at some point in the future. I will say, I'm looking forward to getting back and contributing in those toll lanes. I work in Bothell, so I drive all the time on them. And hopefully, sooner than later, writing the 405 BRT. So thank you to everyone for being here today. We will adjourn this meeting and reconvene as a full council at 7:00 PM. Thank you.